Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, February 5th meeting of the Groton Town Council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, all members of your council are present. That would be Counselor Atwater, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Obree, Parker, Schmidt, and Zepiri, and yourself, Ms. Van Hasky.
Thank you. Could you please stand for a salute to the flag? Mayor Hedrick, would you lead us in a pledge, please? Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A third evening today to do that.
Let's try to make it true.
Good Americans.
Thank you. Okay, recognitions, awards, and memorials, I don't believe we have any this evening. So, we are on to public hearings. I don't believe there are any public hearings, so that leads us to Room Numeral 5, Receipt of Citizens' Petitions, Comments, and Concerns. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during a responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. I have three people signed up to speak. The first is Zell Steever, followed by Betty Russ.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, town manager, and town clerk. My name is Zell Steever, live at 81 Main Street in Groton, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Groton Conservation Advocates. My remarks are in response to the last item on your agenda tonight, where you're going to talk about future budgets, and so I guess this was the appropriate time to come before you and talk about a possible budget for the future. As some of you may know, I had earlier on, actually, I looked up this afternoon, back in 2011, had delivered to the town council a report on climate change and sustainable communities, and I've been the chair of that task force back at that point in time. And a lot's happened since 2011, and Groton has, in fact, taken on a number of activities to respond to some of the recommendations that were made. For example, if you look at the lights carefully in this building and throughout the town, we now have LEDs where originally we had incandescent bulbs. There are streetlights that have been upgraded and made much more efficient, and so a number of things have already happened. But I'm here, at this point, to come before you and ask that you consider putting in the budget for this coming fiscal year monies so that you could more aggressively follow climate change and sustainable communities going forward. Back in 2011, I think it was the meeting of April, I think it was April 11th, that the final report was actually delivered to the council then, and it's probably that report is probably available to you through the town clerk and the old files. But we think that climate change continues to be a big concern in this community. The two big issues are what will happen in sea level rise in our community and how we can combat that in part, in our small way, by making our community more energy efficient. As we had said back in 2011, there are many things that we can do that are sort of the low-hanging fruit. We still believe that to be the case. In fact, the federal government continues to fund climate initiatives and has done so continuously since 2011, and I should point out that the task force back in 2011 was able to secure $198,000 grant during that two-year period that we were in place, and that money was spent on doing various studies for our community. So, the upshot is that we basically had requested the, or had recommended to the council that the council-
You have one minute, sir? You have one minute?
Yeah. The council really do four things. One, that they recognize that climate change, in fact, is real, that the council fund a one position in the town manager's office to follow climate change. The third was to establish a, a town council, establish a permanent task force on climate change and sustainable communities. And the fourth issue that we recommended is that the town council, at the time, establish a Groton Energy Conservation, Groton Energy Fund, which would be a permanent fund where energy savings would be plowed back into additional energy savings going forward. One further point is that after we delivered our report back in 2011, six months later, the town did convene an Energy Efficiency Committee, and that committee did last for just about a short of a year, but I should say that not a great deal happened as a result of that period of meeting. In fact, there was never any votes taken on any actions, and so it sort of fell apart in a year, and so nothing formal had happened.
Your time is up, sir.
So, with that, I will stop, and I would like to hand out to you all the recommendations from that 2011 task force, so that you can at least get some glimpse of what we had in mind.
Thank you. Do you have an extra copy for the minutes? Thank you very much. Betty Russ, followed by Ronnie Frostad. I apologize if I pronounced it incorrectly.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Betty Ann Russ. I live at 321 Wausau Road, North Stonington. I have property here in the town of Groton at 20 and 22 Dartmouth Drive. My concern that I'd like to take to you, I've mentioned this to your Recreation Department head, and he said I need to take this to the council. I enjoy many of the programs that you have at your senior center, and it's offered by your Park and Rec Department. However, whenever I go to sign for any of these, I'm considered to be a non-resident, which in fact, I am a non-resident. I do not live here. However, I do pay $4,500 a year in taxes to the town of Groton, and I'm being treated as if I'm someone who doesn't pay a cent towards those monies. I'm sure that a portion of my tax money does go to support the senior center and the programs that are offered by the senior center and the rec department. What I would ask you to do, I think it's a matter of fairness, is that when you have your brochures made up, instead of having the distinction of resident versus non-resident, and generally it's like a $10 more fee for a non-resident, sometimes it's a little bit more even, is that you have the categories be taxpayer versus non-taxpayer. So, those people who do, in fact, pay taxes to this town can avail themselves of the wonderful programming that you have. I don't think this would be any kind of onerous thing for people to do. I believe that your proof, when you do register, you just show your license, and you show that you're a resident or you're a non-resident. For anyone who wanted to take advantage, if you made this change, they simply would show their identification and some proof of the fact that they, in fact, do pay taxes to your town, and that would make them eligible for a taxpayer fee, so they would not be penalized for paying extra. I hope you consider this. I think it is a matter of fairness. It doesn't, in fact, maybe have harmed a whole lot of people, but it just kind of galls me that I have to pay extra, and I'm already paying quite a bit each year. I hope you consider my comments, and you would consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't know if it's Rory or Ronnie Frostad?
My name is Ronnie Frostad, and I have the exact same concerns that my neighbor, Betty Russ. We both live in North Stonington, and I own some property in Groton, and I've paid taxes since 2005, and I'm about to retire, and would like to take advantage of some of the classes and different things you offer at the senior centers in Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all that signed up on the citizens' petition sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Okay, very good. Seeing none, we are on to responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. If any councilors have responses. Counselor Baumgartner, followed by Counselor Atwater.
So, from what I can gauge from Zell's comments is that he wishes that Groton pursue almost what many congress, the new congressmen and women in Washington have proposed, which is a form of a Green New Deal, and I know at the state level, they've also, they're also considering many bills that would address how we deal with rising sea levels and making our communities more resilient to climate change and supporting sustainability. So, they certainly would support that at the town level, and I know many of my colleagues share a lot of those concerns and would support pretty aggressive actions to combating those issues, even if it's at the local level. So, looking forward to continuing those conversations.
Counselor Atwater and Ms. Perry.
As far as the resident, non-resident situation, and so what the one thing that comes to my mind is if you do a taxpayer, non-taxpayer, I believe there's a lot of people that rent in Groton, and they don't pay taxes. It's their landlord that pays the taxes. So, would you be excluding all of them from the discount or whatever because they're not taxpayers? And that's just a concern. I think if we go forward with this, I think we should address that as well.
Counselor Zepiri, and then Counselor Heed.
Zell, I just had comments about what you had to offer. I think I would like a lot more specificity from you as to what you wanted the council to accomplish. Putting, for instance, putting an extra person in the town manager's office just to address green issues. I think you have to be specific at how we would charge that person. You have to be specific about what you see as problems and solutions that you can bring to us. We're all aware of it, but I don't think we're going to do anything until we see specifically what each thing will accomplish, and is it worth taking those steps? Those are the things that we have to weigh up here, and to have a general concept of awareness of our problem with global warming and the sea rising, we are aware, and I think it's hard to live in this time and not be aware. But what we can do about it specifically is what we have to plan, and we need, if you have insights into what we can specifically do, I would love to hear from you.
So, I just wanted to jump in. The recommendation that you're referring to is from the 2011 report that the prior commission staffed. He was just restating what they had recommended in 2011. But we do have the full report. The clerk found it and has forwarded it, so we can get that to the full body, the report that Mr. Steever was referring to.
Counselor Heed.
Hi, Stanley. In regards to Zell's comments, I also have some budget priorities that would go along the same lines, and I think not only could we put somebody in the office who could help assist the town in making changes, but there's a lot of funding available out there where we could apply for grants as well, to sort of help guide especially property owners that are in areas that are likely to flood in the next 10 or 20 years, just to give them some guidance and help them address the issues that they're going to face. But in addition, I think what comes to mind is a reaction, just an observation, there's a lot of expertise in this area. We have a lot of very professional and people with a lot of experience on these issues. So, if we were to do like a task force, we could maybe get people in from Con College, from some of our committees. I know every time I go to a board or commission, if it's conservation or, for example, shellfish, they all know about these issues, and they have ideas on what should be done. So, what was it, just sort of a week ago or two weeks ago, Stonington had a public discussion on just this very issue, and the idea that the town should be aware of these challenges and that we are sort of working in that direction. Makes a lot of sense. I appreciate your comments tonight. And in regards to the senior center, I'm not familiar with the policies, but I would hope that we could hear back from the director and possibly the town manager on some time. Thank you.
Counselor Obree.
I think we have a lot we have to learn, and I think if we review that report on the recommendations that were done in 2011 and get a little more informed ourselves, then I think it would be good to review what you've shared with us here, because it is definitely something we need to do. In what plan, I'm not sure, but we need to move forward on it. The other thing that I wanted to say, as far as people that don't live in Groton but actually pay taxes in the city, if you're going to go to the beach and you show them that you pay taxes, you pay less for the beach pass. So, I don't think it would be that difficult to work it out, so that if you go to the senior center and you bring your tax bill and show them you pay taxes, because the rest of it goes by address. So, if somebody rents, but they're living in the city, that's fine, and it would be the same in the town. So, I think there'd probably be a way to work out a program that you just put your tax bill on file or something, and then you pay the same as the people that live in Groton. And I'm sure John will probably have a conversation with Barry and see how we could work that out for him.
Mr. Manager?
I'll gather some info and report back to the council.
I don't know how he does all he does, but he'll do it.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, so we are on to item number, Room Numeral 7, Consent Calendar. This is on page, we moved 7A, 7B, 7C, all as one, but the minutes are on page 3, if anybody had any comments on that. Counselor Baumgartner, would you move the consent calendar, please?
I can motion to move the consent calendar, and that includes 2019-75, January 2nd, 2019 Town Council minutes, 2019-74, Special Trust Funds, January, and the 2019-24-1, various appointment and reappointments. So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. Again, the minutes begin on page 3, if there's any discussion on the minutes.
I was going to say it later, but I might as well say it now.
Counselor Heed.
Sorry. Francis Crowley just resigned from harbor management. That's one of the vacancies that we're filling, and I just want to recognize him for his three decades of service on harbor management and thank him for his service. That's a lot of expertise that's moving on, so.
Very good. Anything else on the minutes or the consent calendar? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of moving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to Communications and Report, Reports, Town Councilors. Counselor Baumgartner.
I attended the commissioning of the USS South Dakota this past weekend. It's a great event, and that is all.
Thank you. Counselor Parker.
I attended Mike's Famous Harley kickoff event for the USS Dakota, and I want to thank Mike and the people working at Famous Harley for all their events, how they put together. It was well-run, and I had a wonderful time. Also went to the commissioning for the USS Dakota and did the Super Bowl at the senior center, which is always a fun thing to do. And it will be happening again on February 1st of 2020, just to give you, throw that out there.
Save a date. Counselor Franco.
I attended the Super Bowl, and it was a very large turnout, and Mr. Barry said it was a very successful event. Attended the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Government's Housing and Transportation Public Workshop, which they held due to the expansion of electric boat in the subbase, and it was, had many informative statistics, and it was quite intriguing. Attended the Beautification Committee meeting last night. I think we're getting much closer to focusing in on a few projects that we would like to accomplish this spring. I attended the USS South Dakota's commissioning. It was a very proud moment, because I've never attended one of these before, and just to think that we made it here in our town and created that submarine, and all these sailors were going to be going out in there, you know, traveling the world on it, it was just a very proud moment. I received a few correspondence. One was from Ms. Lisa Grossman, who is looking to have the crosswalk signals have a sounding alert down in the Fort Hill area, at the bottom of the hill, and Mr. Burt and Mr. Schneider have assisted on this and are trying to get, well, they received the proper contacts of the state from Ms. Grossman, and we're trying, and I've also contacted her with them, that she should contact her state representatives for help on that, because it is a state area. I received correspondence from the Fitch baseball coach, who's looking to clear some underbrush in a small portion of Haley Farm, and Mr. Burt is researching that and trying to get information for them on that. I'd also like to announce that there is the Mystic Cheese that will be opening, they're having a grand opening on Saturday the 9th on 225 Leonard Drive, Unit 2A, and I thought it would be nice that if people go and attend that and welcome them to that area. And then finally, had some correspondence on Facebook, and people are wondering where the wooden Mystic sign is down on Route 1, down near the Baptist Church, and it is out being refurbished, and it should be completed in March.
Just to mention that, Noink Point, too. There's also a sign being refurbished down in Noink, in case anyone near Water Street, so if anyone knows, then it's gone, too. And Rick Norris is going to approach the seaport about their little sign by where that Mystic sign goes, see if they want to read that, too.
And thank you for doing that work to find out the answers for us. That's appreciated. Counselor Heed.
Yeah, so Saturday morning, I attended the presentation at the Bill Memorial Library by our Economic Development Staff, John Reiner and Paige Brock, and also the city mayor, Keith Hedrick, and town manager, John Burt, and of course, Counselor Obree, and I are on the task force to review the school properties, the RFPs that are coming in for them, so this was kind of a high-level presentation. But it was very exciting to see how our staff has worked with the city, with, deep with the state of Connecticut, and there's some pretty exciting and transformational changes coming for Groton, so can't wait.
Very good. Counselor Obree.
Trying to think what I've done. I enjoyed the soup. They ran out of it, so I guess you know it was successful. No place to sit, nothing to eat.[1385.33][1385.33](Laughter). Not that that would hurt me. And the other thing, I went to the presentation that was done by the Eastern Chamber in conjunction with Pfizer. It was a very nice presentation, and a lot of positive conversation coming from the speaker on Pfizer being very happy with how things are going now. They're the, we're the only area where they still do research, and so they, the plan now, at the moment, is to keep things as they are and bring in a few more people. So, that was informative. That's about it for me.
Very good. Counselor Atwater.
I attended the Groton, excuse me, Housing Authority meeting. I went to the Connecticut Council of Municipality Seminar on Retirement Planning. I attended the Legislative Breakfast at the Three Rivers Community College. I also went to the Pfizer luncheon with the Chamber of Commerce. I went to the commemoration of the USS South Dakota at Mike's Harley-Davidson. I went to the Community Cafe at Bill Memorial Library on Saturday. I went to the coffee yesterday morning at the senior center with Joe Courtney. This morning, I went to the First Children's Groton Meeting, and I took a tour of the Riverfront Childcare, which is part of First, excuse me, First Children's, Children's First Groton, and I even found time to watch the Super Bowl at home on my TV.[1480.33][1480.33](Laughter).
Counselor Schmidt.
Well, I also attended the commissioning party at the Harley-Davidson for the USS South Dakota, because I was born in South Dakota and brought up there. That was an especially proud moment for me. And then I also went to the presentation by Congressman Joe Courtney at the senior center on the new legislation that's been brought up by Congressman John Larson on social security and the changes that they want to make, so that they can make that fund viable through the next 100 years and be covering a bit more for seniors and do a lot more, but not cost a lot more. So, it was very informative.
Thank you.
No report.
No report. Thank you. Attended the joint land use workshop at the library, which was very well-attended. The city mayor was there, several councilors were there, and it was a good kickoff, public kickoff, for the work that Counselor Obree and the rest of the commission have been doing. I also attended the kickoff at the Harley store. Thank you, Michael Schwartz, who is a Groton taxpayer. He owns property on Route 184, so it's very nice to meet him. And the commissioning on Saturday morning as well. I enjoyed serving the Super Bowl, and the reason why they ran out was because the soup was so good.
Oh, I understand.
We went, I went through two big trays of stuffed pepper soup from the shack, and Counselor Parker served up, hers went very quickly.
Chicken and corn chowder soup from the shack went out.
Went in no time.
No time.
So, it was all done very well, and they did, they did very well. They even had extra seats out in the lobby area, so it was a very nice fundraiser for them. It's, it's good to see them doing things like that. We had our meet and greet at the community center. Got to talk to a lot of the parents there for karate. I attended the golf advisory board meeting, and there are new rates and some new classes of membership proposed, so that will be coming before the council, probably within a month or so, I think. Met with members of the Groton Conservation Group, where they expressed concerns, and we got to chat about some issues coming up. And I just wanted to thank the city and town police force for their collaboration on the autism training. I think it was a wonderful, wonderful way to work together for something that's very important for our peace officers, to have that training to deal with children on the autism spectrum, adults on the autism spectrum. So, thank you for that collaboration. Tomorrow night, just as a brief announcement, we have the Special Board of Ed Town Council RTM meeting right here, where it's a public meeting we'll be doing. I believe the board presented a budget to us at that point, so we all have a busy night again tomorrow. Clerk of the, oh, Mr. Manager, did you want to add anything at this point? Oh, you're, you're right down there after clerk, sorry. I don't want to cut.
He takes longer than that.
Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. The RTM Representative Town Meeting will be meeting next Wednesday, so that'll be the 13th of February at the Groton Senior Center. Their meeting starts at 7:30. They do have, still have a, they have a vacancy in the 1st District. It's a Democratic seat, if anyone's interested, and they also have a new vacancy in the 4th District, another Democratic seat. So, we just recently had a resignation from a member.
Thank you. Clerk of the Council.
Counsel, I, just to piggyback on some of the things that you're thinking about, which is boards and commissions. Besides the appointments that you made this evening and your consent calendar, we still have quite a few items, boards and commissions that need to be filled, in addition to the new Ethics Commission. We do have some applications that will be, that have been referred to the political parties, and so that will be moving forward. But the list is available in my office and also on the town website, along with the applications and the whole process that we've laid it out. So, you go to the main webpage for, I don't know if you've noticed it, but there's a little tiny graphic that the IT department, they nixed mine. Mine was big and bold. Here's this. But it's still, you know, you want to, you want to volunteer, here's how you do it.
It's colorful raised hands that says, "Get involved," I believe.
Yeah.
So, you could look for that on the left-hand sidebar.
Right. So, that's, that's what we're doing as far as boards and commissions.
Great. Thank you. Now, town manager.
Good evening.
Hi.
A lot of my time lately has been on the budget, so that's, that's been pretty consuming. Went to a cyber training put on by CCM last week, excellent one. It was really good. They came here and did it in the Fitch Auditorium, so that was nice. They came here and did it in the Fitch Auditorium, so that was nice. One of the better ones I've been to, been a few on cyber training. Attended the Submarine Force Museum Annual Meeting. You know, it's a great resource for the community, so it's always good to go to that, see their future plans. City-Town Highway Study, we're supposed to get a next draft by the end of tomorrow, and if the city, and, you know, I'm hoping it's the final draft. If so, then I expect, once we both kind of sign off, then we'll schedule a joint meeting hosted by the city to get a presentation from the consultant. Gary and I, and probably Greg Hanover, will be meeting, I assume, will be meeting with Aquarian later this week. They're doing some work coming up in Mystic in March, so I'll meet with them, try and make it as soon as possible, so that's later this week. Nautilus Dock, that's been a long process for that grant to build a Nautilus Dock. On January 11th, the Mid-Atlantic Regional Engineer endorsed the gift acceptance. They have to accept our gift of the grant to build the dock. It's now gone to the Commander Naval Installations Command, CNIC headquarters at the Washington Navy Yard for action. And then, once endorsed by them, hopefully the final stop is the Assistant Secretary of the Navy for Energy, Installations, and Environment to be officially accepted. So, but in the meantime, Adam Wright at the base has told me that they are doing some preliminary work at the museum for that preliminary environmental work and some other stuff. So there's some stuff happening behind the scenes with that. The UPS for the Police Department has been bid out. Bids are due February 28th, so that's moving along. Let's see, and I think that's about it, unless you have something to add.
Great. All right. Any department heads that wish to speak this evening? No? Okay. And the superintendent is not with us this evening. So we're onto committee reports. Nothing from committee as a whole, anything from personnel and appointments? Chairman Hayden.
Yes, just in the name of transparency that everybody knows, we rely on recommendations either from the committees or from, in particular, when it comes to reappointments, from the chairs. So we've already, the council approved this tonight, but the Kenneth Stair, Kenneth Stair Jr. was appointed as regular member. He replaced his father. Patrick Flaherty was moved from alternate to regular member, and we recommended, and the council voted tonight on recommending Matt Luttrell to become an alternate of Harvard Management Commission. Also, we, we recommended, and the council again tonight voted, to make Ali Stephen Starkley a regular member of the Community Development Advisory Committee, and Tamara Rich a regular member of the New Incan School Public Garden Task Force. So that's my report.
Temporary rules.
No report.
Rules?
No report.
And there is no public safety. So we're onto new business. 10A, 2019-82 Shenandoah Golf Course Clubhouse Deck and Ramp Replacement Capital Reserve Appropriation Request. And this is on page 21, but this requires a suspension of the rules to consider this item into act. So is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. There is no discussion on suspension of the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules in order to consider 2019-82, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So moved unanimously, so the rules are suspended. So we are on to Councilor Parker. I believe it's on page 21, please, the resolution.
Resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $9,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund Unassigned Fund Balance. Whereas funds were approved in fiscal FYE 2019, capital improvement budget for Project 6K Golf Course Facilities Clubhouse for the replacement of the front entrance deteriorated stairs and ramp with ADA-compliant stairs and ramp. And whereas the project was bid in the appropriation of $34,000, is insufficient to complete the project. And whereas, in order for the project to proceed, additional funding in the amount of $9,000 must be appropriated. And whereas the finance director has determined there are sufficient funds in the fund balance of the Capital Reserve Fund, should I say, be it resolved? Be it resolved that FYE 2019 CIP 6K Golf Course Facilities Clubhouse be increased by additional appropriation of $9,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund Unassigned Fund Balance? I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Schmidt. Mr. Burt, did you want to address anything with this particular item?
I've got Gary here for any specifics, but I passed out, I said in advance, and then passed out copies of the, of the deck and ramp replacement. We're trying to get the work done. The reason for, you know, normally we would have waited until next month to come in through the regular process to ask for changes. However, we're trying to complete this during the off-season, and I know they've been eagerly awaiting getting this ramp redone. So we're hoping to be able to move forward with it.
Councilor O'Bree.
Lord knows, I want this done, but I have a couple other questions if I could. This takes care of the ramp and the deck, but the entire area was supposed to be improved. And so my question is, what are, what are our plans for the rest of that area? We have an area where I believe we have gas tanks, and instead of putting the poles that look a little better, we just have a piece of cement dropped in front of it. We have an area in the middle that should either have plantings or something to make it look more attractive. And these were all things that were discussed originally with this.
I'm just going to jump in real quickly, because I mentioned it at the golf advisory board last night. And the thing behind the Jersey barrier is some kind of air system. And I had asked about that very area, if that could be included with this, but I don't think there's any funds. Is that correct?
That is correct. With, if the town council, town council appropriates the $9,000 tonight, and there are no funds that are needed extra, in case you hit some rock in the ground, or if there's something that needs attachment to the building differently, there may be some funds left, a little bit of funds left to do some of the, that, that work in front. The Jersey barrier that's in front of that air handling unit, we had concrete bollards there, steel, steel bollards filled with concrete, and between the cars and the delivery trucks pushing the concrete bollards into the unit, destroying it. We had to put a Jersey barrier in there. So that was there to protect the air condition, one of the air conditioning units for the, for the thing. But for the cleanup in that, if there are funds available left over from this project, we will address some of the things, the new, the curbing, the pavement, we can do some of the patching there. And the grounds cleanup, I can get with Mark Berry on cleaning that up just a tad.
Well, my feeling is that this is a business that Groton owns, and you want, you want your entrance to look appealing. I think the ramp is going to be certainly an improvement and lots safer than what's there. But I think it's very important that, that entire area is continued and that, that barrier goes away, we find some other way to protect what needs to be protected. But also, at the time that we were talking about the situation at Par IV, there was conversation about the bathrooms, and I've never heard any more about, okay.
A couple things. One, when we actually, the CIP submitted, did not include landscaping when, when it was discussed at the budget meetings last year. I've never heard about the landscaping before this, actually, tonight. However, if we need to, to do a little bit of landscaping, we'll take it, we'll find the money, public works budget, even if it means an extra fourth, a little bit extra in the fourth quarter transfer, we'll do what we need to, to touch it up there. In terms of, we talked about the bathrooms last year that we would put in for the engineering this upcoming year, and actually, there's a CIP submitted to do the engineering on the bathrooms. You know, that's going to be a little bit of a more costly project. Last year, with how big the CIP list was, we said, let's get this piece done, then we'll move on to the next piece the next year. We got to phase it in. So there will be a CIP, though, and I will be recommending doing the engineering for the bathrooms.
Okay. Well, my point is that the better it looks, the more people we have there. We're very fortunate that we have a situation there, and they've started doing breakfast on Sunday mornings, and several of us went for their first breakfast. And the golfers that it brought in was just outstanding. So I think everything that we can possibly do to make this area look better is very important to Groton and the city. You host us, so we're very happy with that. But we want to, it, it needs to look like a real business.
Just before I go to Councilors of Perry, if the Jersey barrier needs to stay, perhaps you could get a section of that fence that's on the other side blocking the garbage can and just erect that in front of it. If you need the Jersey barrier to protect the air handling unit, just put something in front of that. I don't know if that would work or not, but.
We could take a look at the options.
Councilors of Perry.
Once again, with great temerity, I find myself in full agreement with Leon.
Go Joe!
But I would like to point out on the bids, and I, and I noticed that there's, the low bid is $41,700. And the next low bid, mysteriously, is $41,701. But the next low bid is from a company that's located in the town of Groton. Is there a way that we can give preference to the bidder who is in the town of Groton?
The way that the bids have always been accepted in my 35 years as public works director and assistant public works director was qualified low bidder. There was nothing, we've had through my 35 years, bids that were this close on larger projects. And if the low bidder, by numbers, was the low bidder that was selected, whether it be a Groton resident or a Groton taxpayer or whatever else. I know this is very tight, this is very low here, but the rules that we go by is the...
I understand, but it's a $1 difference. And I, I think that the council may wish to express a preference to give the bid to, or give this particular bidder, this particular contractor, the opportunity to lower his bid by $1. But this is a Groton resident, a Groton business, paying taxes in Groton, employing, presumably employing Groton people. I'd like to see the bid go to, to that particular bidder. And by the way, I've never met him, I don't know who he is. I just looked at the paper and looked at the address and said, this is a Groton business, and the bid is so close, $1, that we should give preferential treatment to that particular business.
Councilor Heath.
I actually would, so, go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Now, I would think to award it outside of the purchasing policy norm, we'd probably, the council probably have to suspend the rules on the purchasing policy to...
I would think so. I would, I would, I would recommend that this go to the town attorney, because that's the pattern, because if I was the low bidder, I would file, the low bidder could file a claim against, file suit against the town.
That's why we're looking at a policy, and I don't feel real comfortable doing a lot of policy.
Councilor Heath.
I was actually going to raise the same question, because it doesn't say on our paper who actually got awarded the, the contract and the $1, just, you know, of the same mind that it should go to a local company. But until the policy gets into place, I guess it is what it is. So, second question, because this is only $9,000 transfer, does it need to be a $10,000 transfer before it goes to the RTM? So we vote on it, and it's done.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else before I go back to Councilor O'Bree? Councilor Atwater and then O'Bree.
Excuse my ignorance on this, but what is the 4,200 deduct and the 3,000, 222 deduct?
What we expect out is, is for the, for the decking, is a composite decking, plastic decking, Trex, a Fibrocom product. The alternate was to go with a five-quarter treated pine, which for that price, we don't recommend accepting. You'd rather have a composite deck there that will keep, keep the color, be easier to clean and last forever. But the, the thing, the, the alternates was a deduct alternate would be to go to a pine, a pine decking, a five-quarter plank, pressure-treated, non-stained.
So if, if you went with the pine decking, then the business here in Groton would be the low bidder? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
If, if, if that's what is taken, correct.
I'm not recommending it, I'm just asking if that's...
Right. It's how it's awarded, how the numbers come out. That if there are several deducts or adds, you would add them all together. And that sometimes when you add or deduct your alternates, it'll change up and down, but whatever that simple mathematics comes out to be, then that's the, that's the bidder that's awarded the project.
So O'Bree and then Perry.
Well, I'm going to tell you, for a dollar, I think that we should, we should go with this first company, and I'll tell you why. This particular company has donated a lot of things to Groton. When there was a display in the city for art at one time, he built all the display things, and that was Groton. He helped with the whales when we were doing the whales. He's done a lot of things in Groton that he's never been recognized for. And I think if anybody was going to put something extra in to this job, it would be advanced improvements. So for a dollar, I think we ought to recognize that. I don't know this other company, and maybe you can tell me something that they've donated to Groton that I'm not aware of. But I am aware of what this other company's done, and it has gone unrecognized, and I think it might be pertinent to do business with this company.
If, if I could answer that question, I know of, I don't know of this company. He'll be vetted out totally through his references, through his insurance, and through everything else. Nowhere's in the specification, is there anything, any credits given to any donations to any town or any town employee or any town project?
I understand that, I'm not saying that. I'm telling you that. I'm telling you how generous this company has been to this town. And I think it would be for a dollar, we could say thank you to him, and hopefully do other things in the future. And if there's anybody that's going to do a little something extra down there, it's this company.
Councilors of Perry.
I feel so strongly about this issue that I'm willing to reach into my own treasury and donate $1 to the town to make up the difference on this bid.
So, Mr. Manager, so this evening, all we're being asked to do is to approve the appropriation.
Right.
The awarding of the bid is beyond this particular resolution.
Yeah, that's up to public works, unless you do something tonight to override the bidding process. However, you're going to want an attorney's opinion first. So if you're really that interested in changing something, what you might want to do is empower me to make the decision based on attorney input. Because if she feels it's definitely not legal, or that we could run into an issue, we're going to want to listen to that.
But regardless, we need to approve the funding this evening. So this resolution has to be approved tonight before we can do anything. Once that's done, if the consensus is to instruct the manager to look into this, and then we, as he said, we can empower him to make the decision based on the advice of our attorney.
Well, I can tell you one thing attorneys and...
Councilors of Perry.
One thing, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
One thing attorneys and insurance companies tell you always is, don't do it, because it's the safest thing for them to tell you to hold back. But I think you have to have a concept of what is right. And I didn't know about all of the contributions this, this company has made to Groton before. I said, hey, we should take on a Groton company. But knowing that, I think that it's even more imperative that we give this contract to that particular contractor.
Is there any discussion on this particular resolution? If there's no further discussion on this resolution, I'm calling for a vote on it, and then the council can decide if they would like to do something else. So I'm calling for a vote on 2019-82 Shenandoah Golf Course Clubhouse Deck and Ramp Replacement Capital Reserve Appropriation Request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. So that passed unanimously. Councilor O'Bree, do you wish to offer guidance to the manager?
I sure do. I would ask the manager that, that he would assist in the selection and take into consideration the, the donations and time that are put in by this company.
I would add to that, under legal advisement.
Basically, there should be a motion authorizing me to, empowering me to make the decision after considering legal advice.
Do you wish to make a motion?
That one.
I'll circle.
Okay.
I want to make a motion.
Madam Clerk.
Yep.
Are you recording, or do you want them to commit it to writing?
I am, I shouldn't have it in writing, but I'm writing.
Okay. Can you say it again, please?
I'd like to make a motion that the town manager, under advice of attorney, make the final selection with the recommendation in mind that's coming from the council.
Second. Is that clear enough?
Yes.
Okay. So that was moved by O'Bree, seconded by Schmidt. Councilors of Perry.
I'm willing to give free advice right now. I'm the town attorney.
This hasn't gone, this hasn't gone through cow, excuse me. Is this an issue?
Yeah, it's, well, it's related. Well, it's related under that, so, I don't know, what do you think about that?
Madam Parliamentarian, this hasn't gone through COW, so we should not be doing this this evening unless we suspend rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so would you withdraw your motion, and withdraw your second, please?
I withdraw my second.
Thank you. So the motions have been withdrawn, so would you like to move to suspend the rules to consider what you just said?
I'd like to ask to suspend the rule, so we can put forward a motion.
Is there a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Seconded by Zepari. All those in favor of suspending the rules in order to put forth a new item regarding the awarding of the contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. The abstention is Parker. Counselor Obray, would you like to make a motion?
Oh my God.
You got this.
Do you have a fancy?
Would you read it aloud, please, Madam Clerk?
Sure. What I wrote was, the town council gives the town manager the power to, under the, oh, excuse me, town manager, under the advice of the town attorney, to make the final selection as advised by the town council for the bid process.
For Shenandoah Golf Course Clubhouse Deck and Ramp Replacement.
Yeah, let me get that part, too. Bid process. Seconded again.
So it was moved by Obray, seconded by Schmidt, as read by the clerk. Any discussion on the resolution read by the clerk? Counsel Baumgartner, and then Counsel Parker.
Just a few questions. You know, I know we're doing this, I don't want to say at the eleventh hour, but would it make more sense to maybe vet a more formalized procurement policy? I know we've talked about that in the past in the council, and perhaps one that's been vetted by, you know, obviously, the council and the town manager, but most importantly, the town attorney.
You're working on that.
Yeah, we have, I'd say now, some draft language to everybody and some background info, we're going to put it on the agenda soon. But would it be more appropriate to do that before we were to kind of implore the town manager to kind of preemptively look at this?
I don't think we have time for that to happen. The reason why.
Plus, the bid went out before a policy, anyhow.
Right.
You're outside of the policy, no matter what.
And we moved, we suspended rules to get this appropriation done, so that the project could be done before the golf season starts, so we don't really have time to go through, to wait till the bid break process. So this is really a one-time thing where we're authorizing the manager to act under advisement of the attorney for this particular item. Counsel Parker? I'm sorry, were you finished?
Well, no, I was just going to say, in concept, I'm very much supportive of, you know, providing preference to folks who, you know, live here, business owners who live here, who do business here, who, or their businesses are based here. I just, I hesitate a little bit doing that before the town attorney, you know, provides their perspective on this. So I just kind of support this with great hesitation, but I really do think we should consult with her before we move forward with this.
Counsel Parker?
No, I yield.
You yield. Counsel Obray.
Well, I think that's exactly what we're doing. I know it's not the same thing, but we're under attorney's advice for what John will do. So at least we're covered for this. And it shows the reason why we should go forward with the actual process of putting something into place, so it'll be there in the future.
As long as the motion specifically outlines that, I'm supportive. But I just want to make sure that whatever language is used.
I'm going to show you included the attorney's advice.
Counsel Atwater.
I guess with the Counsel Baumgartner, I agree that it's something like with the procurement policy we went through a few months ago. If we haven't done our homework and set these things in place, I think it's not advisable to just all of a sudden spring it at the last minute. I'm all in favor for helping the local business, it's nothing to do with that, I just think that we should be more cautious about, about doing these things on a whim, rather than setting these things in place, as our normal way of doing business.
Any other discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you read it one more time, please, for everybody before I call the vote? Thank you.
I'm just writing it down out of my notes, so.
I understand.
Cut and paste, right? Okay. So the motion from Counsel Obray, seconded by Counsel Schmidt, to empower the town manager under the town attorney's advisement to make the final selection for the bid process, the bidding process, of the bidding process for the Shenandoah Golf Course Clubhouse Deck and Ramp Replacement.
Okay. I'll call for a vote on the resolution as read by the clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Are you opposed or abstaining?
Opposing.
Abstentions? So we have seven in favor, one opposed, Franco, one abstention, Parker. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay. So we are on to item 10B, 2019-81, sale or lease of excess property Groton Heights.
Hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee for whole town manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, Planning Director John Reiner, Economic Development Manager Paige Bronk, Groton City Mayor Keith Hedrick, Richard Hines, Steve Nielsen, and David Jones go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section 1-260 for the discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning purchase and development of the former Groton Heights School Building. I so move.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session for the purpose of 2019-81, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are in executive session at 7:33. Thank you, we're back out of executive session, and we are picking up with item 10C, 2019-31 one, FYE 2018 CAFR, and this is on page twenty-four. Counsel Franco.
Resolution accepted in the FYE 2018 Audit Report, whereas the town council has considered the annual audit of the town of Groton's finances covering the fiscal year from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, and whereas the council has discussed the audit findings with the manager of the audit team from the firm Bloom Shapiro, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Groton accepts the files, the FYE 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, the audits, reports, and management letter. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Baumgartner. And Director was here to go over it with us during COW, and we had the opportunity to ask questions at that point. Is there any discussion on the acceptance of the CAFR? Seeing none. Oh, we are down to eight. Counselor Parker had to take leave at 8:30, so we are down to eight counselors. So seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. 10D, 2019-5-1, Capital Improvement Project. Counselor Heath, please, on page twenty-five.
Okay, I will make a motion for a resolution approving the capital improvement project 501-06-5864, fiscal year seventeen, load zip, roadways, and intersections be canceled. Direct staff to notify the CCOG of this action and return the remaining funds of the capital reserve designation balance, whereas funds were appropriated for the, do I need to read all of it?
Yes, please.
So whereas funds were appropriated for the capital improvement project 501-06-5864, fiscal year seventeen, load zip, roadways, and intersections pertaining to the reconstruction of King's Highway between the intersection of Route 1 and Bridge Street, and whereas the Director of Public Works is recommending cancellation of the project for reasons stated, therefore be it resolved that the town council directs the capital improvement project 501-06-5864, fiscal year seventeen, load zip, roadways, and intersections be canceled, and direct staff to notify the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments of this action and return the remaining funds to the capital reserve designation balance. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Zepari. And again, we've had discussions on all of these items in our committee of the whole, so if you need information, you're welcome to go back into the minutes and take a look at our discussion or watch the videos. Any discussion at this point? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-5-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. You abstain? I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
I'm kind of impacted by, sorry.
Seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. That abstention is Obray. Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, I missed you. 10E, 2019-531, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, 2019 application scheduling public hearing on page twenty-five, no, page twenty-six. Counsel Obray, please.
Resolution to hold a public hearing on the town of Groton Small Cities Community Development Block Grant 2019 application. Whereas the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development allocates an annual amount of funding to the state of Connecticut for the purposes of distribution under the CDBG program, a competitive program for eligible municipalities, and whereas in 2017, the town of Groton was awarded a grant of eight-hundred thousand for public housing modernization at the Mystic River Homes, an independent elderly disabled low-income housing provider, which is currently under construction and planned to be completed in June 2019. And whereas this year, one million five-hundred thousand CB, CDBG grant request, the maximal allowed, allowable grant funding available for a single housing authority under the Small Cities Community Block Grant Program will be sought to begin rehabilitation work at the Mystic River Two Congroot to include ADA accessibility, elevator repairs, generator replacement, and code compliance and energy improvement. And whereas the cost to write the grant proposal is less than five thousand and is reimbursable through the Small Cities CDBG program to the nonprofit Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities Echo, and the match for this grant, for this project will be provided by Mystic River Two Congroot from the already established funds, and the grant will be administered through a three-party relationship with the town of Groton, Mystic River Two Congroot, and the Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities. And whereas the Connecticut Department of Housing, DOH, application deadline is April 12th, 2019, and prior to submission of the application, DOH requires the town to conduct a public hearing to satisfy citizens' participation requirements, now therefore be it resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing on the town of Groton Small Cities Community Development Block Grant 2019 application on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, at 6:30 at the Town Hall Annex, Community Room 1. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Obray and seconded by Atwater. This is just setting a public hearing for the block grant? Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2019-531, setting a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on to 10F, 2019-35, EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant, on page twenty-seven. Counsel Atwater, please.
Resolution authorizing application for and receipt of EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant. Whereas the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, has used a request for grant proposals, has issued a request for grant proposals for brownfield assessments, and whereas the Office of Planning Development Services staff plans to apply for funding in the amount of three-hundred thousand dollars to complete brownfield assessments for two of our proposed tax increment financing TIF districts, especially Center Groton, Routes 117/185, and the Thames. I'm sorry. You're, I'll amend that now.
Thank you.
Routes 117/184, and the Thames/Five River Corners District. And whereas the purpose of applying for this grant is to give the town of Groton a full picture of the potential threats to human health and environment posed by these brownfield sites, whereas the estimated cost to identify and quantify the contamination at any targeted properties within the district to inform eventual cleanup operations for redevelopment is three-hundred thousand dollars, it resolved that the town council authorizes town manager John Burt or his authorized representative to submit an application to the Environmental Protection Agency, further authorizes John Burt, town manager, to sign the Brownfields Grant Agreement upon receipt of said grant. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Heath. Any discussion on authorizing the grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-351 EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-22, Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant, the first one, on page twenty-eight. Counsel Schmidt, please.
A resolution authorizing the town manager or his designee to apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Education for fiscal year ending 2020 Youth Service Bureau Enhancement Grant Program funding. Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Education offers Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program funding to municipally-based Connecticut youth service programs for supplies and related expenses connected with programs and activities which benefit Groton youth and families in areas such as youth enrichment, outreach programs, general support, and positive youth development, and whereas Groton Human Services has demonstrated its success in providing youth programs and services, therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John M. Burt or his designee, is authorized to apply for and contract with the State of Connecticut Department of Education, DOE, for fiscal year ending 20, Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program funding in an amount to be determined by the Department of Education. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Zepari. Any discussion on this grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-22-1, State of Connecticut Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program funding, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to the second of these, 2019-23-1, it's another Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Grant. Counselors of Perry.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Education for fiscal year ending 2020 Youth and Family Services Funding. Whereas crisis intervention, prevention, and support programs and short-term counseling services will benefit at-risk Groton youth and their families. And whereas funding is available from the State of Connecticut Department of Education to supplant a portion of the salaries of Groton Human Services counselors who provide intervention and prevention services for at-risk Groton youth, therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John M. Burt or his designee, is authorized to file an application with the State of Connecticut Department of Education, DOE, for fiscal year ending 2020 municipal youth services funding in an amount to be determined by the Department of Education and to amend contractual agreements for such funding to ensure continuation of short-term counseling, crisis intervention and prevention, and support programs for Groton youth and families. I so move. Second.
Moved by Perry, seconded by Schmidt. This is the second of the grants that the town is applying for. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-23-1, Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Grant, say aye. Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2019-84 Tax Payment Deferrment Program, on page 30. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
A resolution establishing a tax payment deferment program for certain individuals affected by the federal shutdown. Whereas the purpose of this resolution is to establish the deferment program for municipal taxes and certain other charges allowed by Bill Number 5765 in accordance with the terms and requirements of said bill for any qualified federal employee residing in the state of Connecticut who is required to work as a federal employee without pay or furloughed as a federal employee without pay. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town Council does hereby establish a tax deferred program as allowed per Connecticut House Bill Number 5765 with the following provisions. One, the town shall not charge or collect interest on any real property taxes, personal property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, or water or sewer rates, charges or assessments or part thereof hereinafter referred to collectively as municipal charges that is payable by an affected employee as defined herein or which became due during the period when such individual was an affected employee. Two, any such municipal charges which shall have been deferred as provided herein shall be due and payable without penalty or interest not later than 60 days after the date on which an individual is no longer an affected employee. Thereafter, any portion of such municipal charges which remains unpaid and all interest and penalties otherwise provided by law shall apply retroactively to the original due date for such municipal charges. Three, all provisions of the general statutes relating to the continuing, recording, and releasing of property tax liens and the precedence in enforcement of municipal charges shall remain applicable to any deferred tax rate, charge, or assessment, or installment, or portion thereof. And be it further resolved that the following shall be used as eligibility for deferment and additional limitations. Number one, as used herein, the term "affected employee" means any federal employee who, during the federal fiscal year 2019, partial shutdown that began on December 22, 2018, is, one, a resident of the state of Connecticut, and, two, required to work as a federal employee without pay or furloughed as a federal employee without pay. Two, in order to determine eligibility for the deferment, the affected employee shall provide to the tax collector sufficient evidence of his or her status which may include, without limitation, a pay stub or bank statement, a federal employee identification card, the federal tax identification number of the employee's employer, and a sworn affidavit from such employee indicating that such employee, one, is currently a federal employee residing in the state of Connecticut, two, is required to work as a federal employee without pay or furloughed as a federal employee without pay. Three, the tax collector may require individuals to recertify their eligibility on a periodic basis of not less than 30 days. Four, the deferment provided under this resolution shall not affect any interest or penalties on lien rights or collection of any municipal charges due before December 22, 2018, or after the date on which an individual is no longer an affected employee. I so move.
I second that. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Granatowski. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Heed.
Do you have a quick question? If the government were to shut down again, would this process of 60 days begin again from the new date that it reopens, or...
Yes, yeah, me and Cindy Lang, we have discussed, and that's exactly what we would do.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner.
A quick question and then a comment. Has anyone, to your knowledge, come forward to the town inquiring about the program?
I know at least two people did. That was late last week, as of then we'd heard from two.
So I was doing some research and I saw that 421 furloughed employees came from the Department of Homeland Security, and I imagine a bulk of them came directly or worked for the Coast Guard. So it'd be curious to see how many folks who either work at the Coast Guard or are members of the Coast Guard do live in Groton, and hopefully, especially if it has been strenuous on their families, take advantage of the program. But it was a 35-day shutdown, 1,500 furloughed employees in the state, and so I think it's important to also recognize our legislative delegation for supporting truly bipartisan bill and the stakeholders and certainly the governor who signed Bill into law. But I'm glad, I hope the council supports unanimously, but I think it sends a strong message that we supported this so quickly.
And I would give reports to the council of anyone who's taking advantage of us, you know, what's happening with it.
Counselor Franco. The state bill 5765, does that... I don't know how to state it. If we have a shutdown next year, will this cover this? Is this indefinitely? Is this a new...
No, because this, you know, if it happened again, let's say on the 15th, when it expires, that would reconsider that continuation of that one that started on, or whatever date that was. If it happens like next year, that we would need to do something.
So the state one is only good for a certain amount of period of time?
I wonder which one. Oh, yeah, because they, I believe they reference a particular date, too. I think it is, I read it when it first came out, and I believe it does. I'd have to double-check that to say 100% certain, but I'm pretty sure it does limit.
I'm got it here.
Do you have it there? Does it tie it to the beginning date?
I'm looking.
Because a lot of this language came out of the bill.
Now that's just when the taxes are due. During the shutdown, so it's just saying it doesn't reference what year the shutdown is, it just says during the shutdown. Sisters of federal authorities, unless there was something, this is still listed as a bill, I don't have the Public Act in front of me, we didn't have the Public Act available to us last week when we voted on this. Shutdown means a federal fiscal year 2019, partial government shutdown that began on December 22, 2018. So it references only to this particular one. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-84 Tax Payment Deferrment Programs, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So moved unanimously. We are on to item 2018-424-1, Sister Cities. This requires a suspension of the rules because it did not go through Committee of the Whole if people wish to take this up.
Am I supposed to make a motion to suspend the rules?
This requires the suspension of the rules if you want to take this up.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Atwater to suspend the rules. This is not debatable. All those in favor of suspending the rules to consider 2018-424-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstention. Are you opposed?
Yes.
Six in favor. One.
There's an extension.
Okay, hold on. Can you raise your hand, please, if you're in favor of suspending the rules? One, two, three, four, for matters of discussion. Five, opposed. Two, abstaining. One. Two opposed were Schmidt and O'Bree. One abstention was Heed. Okay, so the rules have been suspended in order to consider 2018-424-1. Is there someone that would like to make a motion for 2018-424? Read the resolution. If you wish to make a motion for it, you must read the resolution. Resolution to approve letters of invitation to be a sister city, whereas the Town Council recognizes the advantages of creating a relationship with Haifa, Israel, and with Kingston, Jamaica, and whereas the City of New London has already expressed interest in becoming a sister city with Kingston and with Haifa, and has expressed interest in partnering with the Town of Groton for such endeavor, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager to send a letter of invitation via Congressman Joe Courtney to Haifa, Israel, and Kingston, Jamaica to become sister cities with the Town of Groton. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Atwater. Is there discussion on this item? Counselor Baumgartner.
Just to clarify the process, so as it's spelt out in the resolution, we'd be sending the letter via Congressman Courtney to Haifa, Israel, and Kingston, Jamaica. But I do recall in, from watching previous testimony from George Methenow, who provided the presentation, that it would be appropriate to also involve the consulate in Boston. And so my question would be, to kind of tie up those loose ends, what would be the most appropriate avenue? Would it be kind of reaching out to, you know, to the consulate's office directly, or to do that via our congressman?
The way the resolution was read, this is going directly to Congressman Courtney's office, if you wish to amend the ordinance, you're welcome to make an amendment to change the way it reads, and then that would have to be second. Mr. Burt wanted to speak.
Just the reason I had used Congressman Courtney is just, I was at that meeting where it was presented to him, and he said to provide that to him at that time, he'd be happy to move, you know, just to forward them. However, I do not really need to specify that part here, you could just strike via Congressman Joe Courtney, just send a letter of invitation, I'll talk to his staff, and we'll send it whatever the staff thinks is the most appropriate way.
Or if you wanted it to go through a different channel, you could make an amendment to do that. But the way the resolution is right now, it's going there. Counselor O'Bree, and then, let's see, Baumgartner, O'Bree, Schmidt.
If I understand some of the conversations that have gone on about this, it would go to Congressman Courtney. He then, if he just wants to, would forward it to the appropriate people to move it forward.
Counselor Schmidt.
Well, Counselor, Mother Congressman Courtney yesterday told me that he and his staff are just so committed right now that they would not be able to do this, but that he would advise us to whom we should address the inquiry.
Counselor Heed, Franco, Baumgartner again.
So I'm not opposed to this initiative, but I think it may be, we need to do a little bit more due diligence, and that's my position.
Counselor Franco. Mr. Burt, have you heard that Joe Courtney didn't have time to do this?
I have not spoken, I haven't spoken with his office or him since that initial meeting back, whatever, October, November, or whenever that was.
Counselor Baumgartner.
I'm not sure if I'm ready to formally propose an amendment to the resolution, but I would suggest that we probably, that we should reach out to the consulates of each respective, you know, each respective city and country, in large part because they are based here, and I think it would show that we're going through the proper channels. You know, instead of reaching out to, kind of blindly, we can say, hey, you know, we're in Groton and in London, we're reaching out to you, we want to be partners. But I think if we correspond with the folks who are based out of here, I think it could probably go along a long way, so just to kind of clean up that language a little bit.
Counselor Atwater and then S. Perry.
I guess my thought is that, seeing reach out to the consulate, if the City of New London has expressed interest in doing this, wouldn't it make sense to reach out to the City of New London? And I also think that you send it on to Congressman Courtney's office, and if he comes back and says, no, we don't have time, then we find another avenue. If he says fine, he sends it off, it only takes five minutes, then it's done. I mean, I don't, I don't see where he and his staff should be that busy that they couldn't take five minutes to address an envelope and send it off.
Counselor S. Perry.
I don't think this is fresh out of the box. I think this has already been explored. And both of these cities, in Jamaica and Israel, are interested in this kind of a partnership or becoming a sister city. I don't see a downside to this. It does raise the profile of our town and our community, and it may get us some cultural exchanges that we wouldn't have otherwise. I think it'd be benefit to not only the children, but all the people that live here to have that kind of exchange. So I'd like to see us go ahead with this.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Yeah, I'd like to formally amend the resolution to include, so to strike to Haifa, Israel, and to Kingston, Jamaica, and to include consulate of or from Israel and Jamaica to become sister cities with Haifa and Kingston.
Are you, so, could you please read how you want, can you read the resolve how you want it to read?
Yes.
So the town clerk could record it, please.
So, resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager to send a letter of invitation via Congressman Court, or via Congressman Courtney, to the consulate of Israel, and Israel and Jamaica, to become sister cities, for Gro, I'm sorry, for Groton, to become sister cities with Haifa, Israel, and Kingston, Jamaica.
Can you read that one more time?
Yes.
That's eight.
So, resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager to send a letter of invitation via Congressman Courtney to the consulate of Israel and Jamaica, to the consulate of Israel and Jamaica, to become, for, I'm sorry, for Groton, to become sister cities with Haifa, Israel, and Kingston, Jamaica.
I think it was... Is there a second for Counselor Baumgartner's motion?
Second.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, are you, we have to take this kind of slow because people have to write things down and type things up, so be patient, please. So the amendment was by Baumgartner, as read, and it is seconded by Heed. Are you leaving via Congressman Courtney in there, or are you striking via Congressman Courtney?
I'm leaving that there, yes, leaving that there for now.
Okay. So the amendment has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the amendment? Counselor Atwater.
I would just like to say, Counselor Baumgartner, could you say the consulates of, rather than the...
Consulates, yes, I was going to clarify that.
It sounds like it's the two are the same, and they're two separate consulates.
Yes.
So just to clean that up is all.
Plural consulate, so consulates.
And I assume there's Town of Groton as part of that as well, instead of just Groton?
For the Town of Groton to become sister cities with Haifa, Israel, and Kingston, Jamaica.
Is there discussion on the amendment? Counselor Baumgartner.
So just to clarify, the consulate, they're essentially ambassadors to the U.S., so they operate in the same sense that the embassy, you know, having an embassy in Washington, I think Jamaica and, close Jamaica and Israel has, they have their consulate here in Boston, which, if I'm not mistaken, oversees their work for the New England area, so that would be the proper channel, and just, I think, cleans up some of the language and confusion. But I do think we also have to address kind of the dimension of coordinating, I wouldn't say even just with Congressman Courtney, but to what extent we also engage our two senators, because I know they also have a... Because I know they also have a stake in the game and could potentially play a role.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? So, the resolution has been amended. Parliamentary procedure again, question for you?
Well, I just, I wrote what I thought was the resolution. It's kind of been jumped around, but I wrote, resolved that the town council authorizes the town manager to send a letter of invitation via Congressman Joe Courtney to the consulates, that's plural, of Israel and Jamaica to express the interest of the town of Groton to become sister cities with Haifa, Israel and Kingston, Jamaica.
Is that acceptable, Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes.
And is that what you seconded? Who seconded that? Counselor Head, is that acceptable to what? Okay. So, I just have a clarification. The whole resolution has been amended, so we will vote once. We do not vote on the amendment and then the original resolution, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We're voting one time.
That's correct.
Resolution as amended.
You've already got that amendment on the floor.
Right.
This is the amendment, this is the whole thing you're voting for.
If the amendment is defeated, we go back to the original resolution.
That's why I threw this to you.
If you defeat the motion that's on the floor, then you'd have to put the other motion back. No, no, you have this motion on the floor right now and you have amended it, so you have one amendment on the floor. Your original motion is still on the floor, but if you defeat this motion, but you're voting, it's as if it's just one. It's not like there's two different things. See what I mean?
No, there's an amendment offered to an original motion.
Right. That stays.
That's a separate motion. So if we defeat the amendment, then we vote on the original motion.
Exactly, exactly. But then if you want to amend it again, you can.
So we're voting, the first vote we will call is on Counselor Baumgartner's amendment. Is that what you're telling me?
Right. Right, you're not going to say an amendment and then go back. If this passes, you're done.
Counselor Zepari, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something?
No, that's what I wanted to say. If we defeat the amendment, then we go back to the original. The only other thing I would say, it would be good, since this is supposed to be New London in Groton becoming sister cities with these two cities, if we notified the town, the city of New London of the action we're taking.
Okay, we have Counselor Atwater, then Counselor Head.
Just to clarify, if we pass the amendment, it also passes the motion.
Well, that is the motion. Your amendment is your motion.
But if we defeat the amendment motion, we still have the right to vote.
On the original motion.
On the original.
Correct.
All right, just to be clear.
Counselor Head.
First of all, do we have confirmation that New London wants to be a part of this other than we've heard it? And second, what kind of workload would we be asking Congressman Courtney to conduct for us, like to carry this through?
How much groundwork has been done?
I don't know if I have a copy of the, my understanding, what I've been told is that the mayor, Passero, had signed the letter on behalf of the council. I don't believe the council itself voted on it. The mayor signed the letters of interest, but I'm not sure if I have a copy or not. I'd have to look in my file. I've got quite a few files now, papers on this. And then in terms of work, if it went anywhere, you'd probably, you'd form a committee and, you know, you'd have to have a staff person, staff as you work through. I think I sent out sample.
You were talking to Joe Courtney.
Oh, Joe Courtney.
He's up.
That should be simple, yeah. They're basically making an introduction. That would be pretty simple on that part.
They're just forwarding the letter.
Essentially, yeah.
And then what happens after the letter is forwarded, it comes back to us or?
If they were, if either of them were interested, then you'd probably form a committee, you know, you'd get together and start hashing over that memorandum of understanding. I sent some sample out, a couple samples out of other community sister city agreements.
Counselor Baumgartner.
If there is a desire by the council to also clean up the language, you know, the language with Congressman Courtney and to, I think, in my eye, broaden it, to also start engaging some of our additional partners, as I mentioned, you know, our two senators, and I'd be willing to pull the amendment to the motion. That way we can actually have a conversation about it without risking, you know, this failing and then it doesn't happen again. Because I do think it's promising to, you know, engage two foreign, you know, cities and to become sister cities. But then again, this is something that, you know, obviously, you know, we still have to do our homework on. And so, you know, I'd much rather support this, knowing that we're all on the same page, because it is something that we should celebrate.
Are you suggesting we postpone this to a time definite?
I'm suggesting that we, we, I'm not sure I can answer that, Mayor.
Okay.
But what I will do, in light of, I will pull my amendment to the motion. Yes. Can I, may I do that, parliamentary?
You're withdrawing your amendment.
Yes.
Does the seconder withdraw his second? That would be you.
Sure.
Okay. So Counselor Baumgartner has pulled his amendment and Counselor Head has pulled his second. So we are back to the original motion at this point.
Can I mention something just for future reference?
Yes, Mr. Manager.
I just made up to double check. You're not really done when you make a vote on the amendment. You're voting just to change that original motion, then you vote on the amended motion, just so you, I double checked with Robert's rules. If you had an amendment, that doesn't complete it by voting on that amendment.
Okay. So we don't have any amendments right now. We have the original resolution. There seem to be questions and lots of discussion and I don't see an urgency for this, but we have Counselor Schmidt and Counselor Overy that wish to speak.
I just feel that we are rushing into this without considering what the town of Groton would like to do if they feel that this is something important for the town to do and undertake. I think there's a method that we could use to poll the residents and find out what their feelings are about a sister city.
Counselor Overy.
Just let me gather my thoughts here for just a second. I think that this is an excellent idea, but I don't think we know enough about what it really means, what the responsibility is of becoming a sister city. I was involved many years back now with a overture that was made to Russia with, when they gained the ability to have their own government. And, you know, there was quite a bit that had to be done. They came here, people went there, there were dinners, there were, you know, there was a lot. And I'm just not sure what we're stepping into. I think maybe if we had just a little bit more knowledge, maybe somebody that's gone through this process can give us an idea of what's expected to be a sister city. If it's just, I would hate for it to be just sort of a token thing. I think if we do it, we want to do it and we want to do it right. And I, as I say, I think it's a great idea. And I'm sure that Congressman Courtney would find the time to guide us eventually, but maybe we could find somebody to guide us before then.
All right. It seems like there is not consensus, so I will make a motion to postpone this to the February 12, 19 COW for consideration. Is there a second for postponing it to February 12? Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Head.
Is there somebody we could maybe bring in to talk with us?
Well, perhaps even we could invite Mayor Passero over and we could discuss with them what they have already done. So I've made a motion to postpone this to February 12, 19. It was seconded by Head. Any discussion on postponing? Counselor Baumgartner.
I'd like to participate in just in planning and discussions, whoever's interested and willing partner and willing to kind of see this through.
Do you need more time? Would you prefer it be the 26th?
I think, no, I think that's appropriate.
12th is fine.
Yep.
Seeing no further discussion, we need to vote on postponing it until February 12, correct? So all those in favor of postponing?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Don't we have a motion on the floor?
But I think if you move to postpone...
You have a motion to postpone, goes over, so you're not taking that off the table. It's on the table, but it's being postponed. So you're taking it off the table.
Mr. Roberts, just wanted to be sure.
So all those in favor of postponing till the February 12 COW, item 2018 for 24 sister cities. Let's do hands, please. Schmidt, Overy, Granatowski, Head, Baumgartner. All those opposed? Zepari, Atwater, Franco.
Can we do the entertaining at your house, Joe? Can we do the entertaining at your house?
Schmidt, one, two, three, four, five, in favor of postponing, three opposed, zero abstentions. So this item has been postponed until the February 12, 19 COW. We're on to 10K 2019 83 FYE 2020 budget discussions. There's no action taken. This was a request by Counselor Head to open up the floor and give people a chance to offer thoughts about FYE 2020 budget. Counselor Head, having said that you would request this item, would you like to start?
Sure.
Thank you.
I had four items. Just last year, we entered the budget process and I feel like we showed up, we started punching holes in everybody's budget, and we ended up where we ended up, which was, I think, 2.25. And it didn't take a whole lot of planning to get there, it's just where we ended up. So I thought this time around, maybe we could give a few ideas of what we think we'd like to see in the budget, what we think we'd like to not see in the budget, something like that. So I came up with four things and I can either read them, read the entire page, or just give four bullet points.
I suggest bullet points.
All right. I can do that.
And then you could disseminate that via email to everybody if you'd like.
So, out of the four, the first one is basically a want. I think it would be really nice to, really nice, I'd like to see Groton develop in a way where we basically take our plan of conservation and development when it comes to roads. So if we have roads integrated with sidewalks, the crosswalks are in the right spot, there's connections to trails, it gives you opportunities to commute by bicycle or, you know, jog, you know, in a safe area kind of thing. Or as we discussed about Allen Street, if instead of narrowing the street, you widened it, you being the town, widened it and put a park down the middle with a path on it, you know, that becomes a destination and a new experience for the town. So recognizing this is all very expensive to accomplish, it's my wish that it happened. So maybe, you know, when you're redoing roads, that could be a part of what we're trying to accomplish. The second thing is, in terms of fiscal health of the community, I know that if we increase the reserve, it supposedly decreases the cost of bonding. It would be nice to have an idea of how much you would have to increase or decrease to affect your bonding costs, so, you know.
Okay. We've talked to the bonding agencies about that. Really what it is, is if you don't have enough fund balance, you increase your interest rate costing more. Basically, they just want to see an appropriate amount, like around 15%. Beyond that, it's not going to really move much. So we're at where we, right around where we should be.
Great, good to know. You know, the last couple of years, to dovetail with that, I think the previous council was put in an impossible position and we ended up with a very large tax increase. Last year was a very small one and, you know, expenses are going up, health costs increase every year 20% or so. We have infrastructure that we have to repair, but I think we need to be cognizant of our taxpayers to make sure that we're not increasing too much. And, you know, ideally it would be flat or down to last year, but, you know, dare to dream, so to speak. So that would be a nice goal. Then on to section, or idea three. I think climate change is already affecting Groton. We have places that are flooding now that haven't flooded, that didn't flood 10 years ago. There are places we think might experience more flooding in the next 10 years. I would like to kind of echo Zell Stever's comments earlier today. If we need to talk about having another body put into the town manager's office or something like that to help guide the town, look for grants, advise us on infrastructure changes, do we need to raise roads? I think there are eight pump stations that are at risk. These are the kinds of things that it would be nice to know that we have somebody who's advocating for the town and advising property owners what they're going to need to do to protect their property. Because otherwise it'll just be, as Leanne, or Counselor Overy has mentioned, sometimes you go show a house and the cost of flood insurance is skyrocketing. So the free market is going to take care of it, but I think that as a community, we should be helping our residents in identifying the important things to protect. And finally, because there are expensive things happening and, you know, we're counselors, I think we rely on the staff and they come to present their budget the way that they want it to be, but they should also be willing and able and I guess prepared to present creative ways to change their budget. So I know nothing about human services, you know, I kind of think maybe a wish after this year is that, or a goal for post-budget is we set up a task force to make sure that human services is actually addressing the issues that need to be addressed among the most vulnerable members of our community. You know, maybe we're misapplying our resources. Maybe there are things the state is already doing or there are other organizations that do it better. And, you know, it would be good to know. It's more than I'm completely familiar with, you know, sitting here, but that's kind of the direction I was going.
I would just say...
And I only use human services as an example, you know, just put that out there. It could be the library, it could be the police department, it could be anything. I just, it's one area that I would like to be more involved in.
My goal, I think, is that we should take care of what we have in town here, maintain what we have. Having said that, that includes maintaining our town itself. And I do think we need to take some action on climate change. I don't know if that means adding a body, but I do think it means we need to form some kind of commission. And we're going to be meeting with some people locally to make a plan to move forward. And I don't know if we need to allot any money to address resiliency and sustainability, but that is all part of maintenance, maintaining the town that we live in. My other priority is education. My big goal when we first got elected was to make sure that the schools stay high-quality schools. We've got, spent a year fighting to get the schools built. I also am strongly supportive of all the community services we offer, including public safety, human services. So those are kind of my areas. I want to make sure that we are reaching those vulnerable people and that we're taking care of the people that take care of all of us. Does anybody else want to offer any insights? Counselor Zepari.
Patrice, I agree 100% with you that we have to take care of our, of the structures and the services that we have in the town and we have to preserve them. At the same time, I think we have to be frugal. I think we have to be very responsible with the money we're spending. And I think in that, to that end, I would like to see us compare the budgets of the last, before we begin, have the full budgets of the last two to three years, that, years that have been completed, showing what was budgeted and what was actually spent. We have, we received a report today and I spent some time with John Burt before the meeting, because it wasn't clear what the past year expenditures were. We inferred from looking at that, that it was this time last year, it wasn't the entire year. But I'd like to know the entire year, what was budgeted and what was actually spent for those things that were budgeted and how much was left over. If we're budgeting far and excess of what we're spending, we're taxing people for that amount of budgeting, but they're not getting any benefit from it. So I would like to see us take a hard look at that and see if we can get our estimates of what we need to spend down to, closer to reality. And so I really think that we have to support our services, our police, our schools, our... our schools, our waterworks, our infrastructure, and our senior center. We had, you know, parks and recreation. We have to support them. But we have to also see that they're not asking for more money than they actually need. And that's, that should be a priority for us.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Baumgartner?
Well, this will be my first budget session. As you may recall, you appointed me to the council, I believe, a week and a half or two weeks after you voted on the budget. So I'm looking forward to working with you all during the process. And, but just from reviewing kind of previous, you know, just the budget book that was provided by Director Landry, you know, maybe looking at doing things a little differently, especially the way we kind of look at infrastructure spending, as we talked about, and talking about the capacity of the town to borrow on projects, really what is our capacity to maybe invest a little more? And what are, what would those priority projects look like, especially in the areas where we're really trying to focus, hone in on improving economic development, whether it's ranging everything, you know, ranging from Mystic to, you know, by Long Hill Road where, you know, maybe eventually we could, in Fort Hill, where we could eventually have TOD, transit-oriented development, walkable communities. And so I think there's a, there's a lot to consider. And certainly, I'm in strong agreement with, I think, the majority of the council on the urgent need to invest in our green infrastructure, improving our waterworks, and making our communities more sustainable and energy efficient. And I know we've also more recently created an economic development fund that supplements a lot of the programs that, you know, the state may have, and certainly our efforts to recruit and retain small businesses. So maybe looking to strengthen that in ways that are, if that makes sense, and certainly wouldn't become too burdensome on the town, but also could maybe give us a leg up over surrounding communities to, again, maybe land a big fish. So, yeah, looking forward to it.
Counselor O'Gree?
I agree with what's being said. I just want to have the foresight that we need as we make these decisions, and especially when it comes to our planning department and our economic development division. There's going to be a lot coming forward, and we have to stand, stand with them and keep them supported financially and realize how lucky we are to have the people we have working for us. And be sure that we support that while making quick decisions that'll make Joe happy.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Nothing from you, Robert?
Robert? Mr. Burt?
Just to give a little bit of a budget, where we're at right now in the budget. Of course, we're still in the middle of it. So I'll just give you an up-to-date version where we're at. We're still receiving outside agency requests. Those are all due in this Friday. So I don't have a handle on those yet. City and Groton, Long Point, they don't send theirs in till late in the month. So I haven't seen those yet. In terms of the town departments, when we started out, the initial budget was about 2.8 million increase. Right at this point, I'm down to, right about 1.7 million. You know, a good chunk of that is healthcare. There's other things like, you know, the 85,000 for the new rules on MS4. And there's different things that, you know, come up that you have to deal with. We're still working at it, but I'm not anticipating that coming down a whole lot more. However, I am anticipating cutting out a lot more of the CIPs and going down a lot on CIPs. Making some hard choices there. My goal on CIPs is we spent about 3.5 million out of the contingent, out of the CIP fund and general fund last year. I'd like to get that down to 2.5. I'd like to, you know, back to where we used to be more in line with. So that's my goal that I'm trying to be really, that's going to make some hard, you're going to have to make some hard decisions. For instance, you know, bridges, you know, on some of those ones that have hung out there for a while, you'll have to decide on that. But, you know, some of these things that have hung out there for a while, I think it's time to decide, okay, either you do it or let's just, what do we do to take this off the books and decide we're not going to do that ever? So I'll be bringing up some of that type of, some of those type of things. I don't have anything in there. Well, we've, we're looking at, we just had a meeting today talking about the CIPs, talking about climate change. And the city just had, I just blanked on their name, but they had a group come in that does the, a bit of pulling your community resources together to do a kind of a community, where we, where are we at on climate change? And what can we do for, you know, what are our assets? What are our, you know, liabilities? Where, you know, what can we do? That might be a first step we may want to consider here. We're also talking about, there is an option of doing a small plan on a portion of town for about 65,000. But I'm not quite sure if we're ready to jump into that year one or not, if we want to do the free version first and start pulling people together before we decide. I hate to be the one to decide, okay, yes, let's just do it on that section of town and to start with. And here's, give me 65,000. I'd rather do the free one and pull people together and maybe see where we're heading, do it smart before we start spending the money. Let me look at your notes a little second here. You know, in terms of cutting anything else out of the departments, you know, as it is, staff are, have trouble for the most part getting things done. They're, you know, of course, I'm just like it, but, you know, I've still been over here since I've taken a day off. I do have to take a day off soon though for a wedding. But, you know, we have to be careful though on committees and other things that require staff time. People, you're going to have to start choosing, okay, what committee are we going to drop data committee? We are at that point, either you're going to have to have staff, or you're going to have to drop committees, or drop staff time to committees. We are there. There's not a lot of fluff in this budget. We're at the point of, in order to cut things, you have to cut services. You know, obviously, the big goal would be to, you know, we want revenue, but until we get, we need to get handle on benefits, you know, they're going to keep increasing. And whatever planning them do, it's not going to keep up with all that. We need to make, you know, structural changes. You know, obviously, I'd like to see more caution with other entities. And it's much easier the closer you are, you know, you need to have willing partners. That's going to be a challenge. But other than that, it's a policy decision on cutting actual services. There's not a lot I can do with the budget at this point. I've cut out what I can. But without direction from you on actually cutting a service out, I'm pretty much near the end of the department part of the budget. That's where I'm at at this point. Some tough decisions if you really want to get the budget down.
Counselor Zepari?
One of the things we talked about last year in the budget session, and I don't know that we've made any progress on it, but we now routinely bond for road repairs. That's an annual expense that we can expect every year. And issuing a bond for it every year means that we're going to have that much more debt expense, debt service expense. And I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Sooner or later, we've got to wean away from this process of bonding for an annual expense. And it may be by bonding for a portion of that in this upcoming, but paying a portion out of the budget outright until we get rid of this practice of bonding for road repair on an every-year basis. It just doesn't make sense.
The clerk wanted to say something, if you don't mind, Mr. Burt?
I just want to make a clarification that the bonding that you're speaking to was a referendum, a five-year referent, five-year bonding program for roads. You don't have to redo it. But we're still, we had money left over. And so that's, the council had extended the program, and it wasn't rebonding new money. It was only allowed to do a certain amount of money. It was for five, you know, we had a five-year program and a certain amount of money. So you'd have to do another referendum with the town. The town voters voted on it.
Mr. Burt?
I haven't read the language on the referendum, so I'm not going to speak to that. But generally speaking, I agree with Joe generally. Other than in the short run, it's going to cost us more money to get out of it. Basically, it was a way of pushing off, you know, getting a, you know, a little bit of time of not paying for roads. And now to get out of it, you'll have to pay more to pay off that bond debt while at the same time paying for the roads. But it did remind me about the school bond. You know, the school bond is, first $20 million for the school bond will be issued in April. The first year's payment and interest will be about 1.7 million. That's about a half a mil added on to the, to the, you know, mil rate that we'll be facing. So that's another challenge. And by the time the whole school is bonded over the next few years, that'll be about two mils added on to our mil rate.
I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. Counselor Franco, did you want to address any of your budget priorities?
I wasn't actually sure what this topic was going to include in just the budget discussion. So I wasn't really prepared to come with my own thoughts. I thought maybe we were going to listen to the town manager with his. I wasn't sure what, so I'm not really prepared.
Counselor Atwater, did you want to speak?
I just have a question for the town manager. You say that the mil rate will go up to two at some point, but as the, as the bond is, principal is paid down, the interest goes down, does that mean that excluding all other circumstances?
It's at the height of it, it would be around two.
And then it would, it would trend down after that, assuming no other changes?
That's my understanding.
And Counselor Schmidt, you're the only one who doesn't have the opportunity to speak.
Well, I think that we have to maintain what we have in order to keep the momentum going with our planning department and what's being planned in the future to bring further businesses into the area. We have to have that infrastructure in order to bring people in. So we have to be very careful not to cut our noses off despite our face. I think that we have, we are going to have to face increases.
Okay. Everybody has had the opportunity to speak if they so desired. Does anybody wish to speak for a second time?
I would just like to say something.
Counselor Franco?
I agree with Joe in the sense that we do have to watch our budget. There are many people on fixed incomes. There's been many complaints about how we've gone up. But on the other hand, I mean, we're one of the lowest towns. I mean, we're in the bottom, what, 23 of Connecticut out of 169 towns with our tax rate. So it's, it's a balancing act. There's something that I would like to know, is like a plan on our infrastructure and what is needed, when it's going to be needed, and that we could possibly plan for some future issues. As of last year, we had to take out the oil tanks, and there was no other option. That was the very last year. It couldn't have been, but if we have other issues like that, we would know in the future when they're coming.
We have a plan that goes about, what, six years out or?
Capital improvement plan.
Yeah, we have a capital improvement plan. It shows that stuff on it for six years. Now, you know, we need an updated road, you know, road pavement condition study to see what roads need to be done out there. That's certainly needed. And that will be a recommendation of mine to do that in the CIP. I will note, though, that one thing you'll see out of the city, I am anticipating in that city highway study, is that we're not spending as much on roads as other towns of equal size. We're probably underfunding. Our staff is, they're finding our staff is equivalent. We have the right amount of staff in public works, but we're probably not spending enough on roads to keep up long-term with the condition. But something we'll want to keep in mind.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I think everybody has spoken. Any other last, last words? That sounds awful. Anything else? Anybody wanted to say? Okay. So then, Counselor O'Gree?
I would just say to the audience out there, if there is one...
Excuse me. Hold one second, please. Counselor O'Gree has a floor right now. Go ahead.
If you have ideas and suggestions, call any one of us and let us know. And we're absolutely open to listening and trying to do the best we can. But we need, we need suggestions. We need input. Everybody's friendly to talk to.
We are on to Roman number 11, other business.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Zepari. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously.